Fifth information session for the Montgomery County Commission. I do not have COVID. I've tested three times. I have some type of sinus congestion infection. Commissioner Sankey said he wasn't comfortable sitting next to me if I don't put this mask on, so. Protocol, thank you. So with that, I'm going to ask Commissioner Sankey to lead us in a word of prayer.
Good morning, everyone. Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you this morning. First of all, we want to just thank you for your grace and mercy. We thank you for another day for giving us, Lord God, an opportunity to really get involved and to appreciate the gift of life. The summit said that you were a way maker, a promise keeper, a light in the darkness. We thank you for being all of that. And we ask that you would just touch those, Lord God, who are not feeling well today. Our chairman, and we pray that you would just cause him to be made whole again and all of his systems will line up and begin to function as you intended for them to function. We thank you now for all those who have gathered here, Lord God, to be part of this process. And we ask, Lord God, that they would just find everything to be pleasing because we're doing it, Lord God, in your name. We just thank you now for this another day. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Good morning. Our visitors today will be county engineer George Speak, chief revenue clerk Allison Holland, finance director Cheryl Thomas, and housing manager Randall Beasley with the Alabama Department of Human Resources. The items that we will consider in the formal session are a resolution to support the proposed panhandling campaign, an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation concerning funding for intersection improvements at Vaughn Road and Ryan Road, an amendment number two to the bridge to manage and operate Davis Transitions, a community-based adolescent alternative program at the youth facility. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Does anyone have anything to add? Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Any additions there? Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
I do have a question, Doug. On that, the baseball league out of AUM.
Yeah.
Who pays for that, that trip they're going on down in New Orleans?
Normally, what happens is the teams, the All-Star teams, as they advance to state and World Series, they raise money to help pay for the hotel, gas expenses. I know like, for example, Montgomery American is in my district. They have like five teams just about every year go to state. Now they got one going to the World Series. So I try to help each one of those with a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars.
I got a call from somebody, they're in your district, but I don't know where the kids are from, but I'm trying to figure out. They never did tell me what, how much they needed or who to get the money to.
Yeah.
And I got, I saw your note and Rhonda's note. Do you just give it to the, to the conference and specify them?
Yeah, what you do is you give it to the league.
The commissioner.
Because they're, they're under the city of Montgomery. It's so say, for example, AUM would be city of Montgomery, AUM, youth baseball and softball.
You don't specify the team?
Normally, I, I would give it just to the league and then I would tell the commissioner which, who it goes to.
See, I don't, and that's what I, I don't know how to do, how to get it to the person to call.
Yeah.
He's trying to raise money for that particular team.
Have you still got his number?
Yeah, I'm gonna call him. We can just move on, I'll get that. I think I still have his number.
And Rhonda, AUM is actually in yours, right?
Yes, it is in mine.
Yeah, it's on that side, so.
Person that called, we live out Lake Point.
Yeah, we live.
We have, we share a lot of families.
We overlap, you know, southernly, I mean, Montgomery American, AUM.
Montgomery Gray.
Montgomery Gray, Southeastern, we all share constituents all through all those, so.
Well, I want to help them, but y'all have already helped some of them. I want to see if you've already helped this team, they don't need my help.
Yeah.
You know, I'll find out before we vote.
So no additions? Yes, ma'am?
Are we on designated?
Yes.
I do. Two thousand dollars from my designated to the Montgomery Dragon Boat.
Is that back, Commissioner Walker, the Dragon Boat?
They're, they're, yeah, they're, they're doing something a little bit different in the Dragon Boats this year, but they've got, they've got multiple events coming to the riverfront. A big one, they've got two small events this summer. And then, and they're not Dragon Boat events, they're paddleboard. And then this fall, they're, they're working on a major regional event. That'll be very exciting. I'll let them announce it when it's time, but yeah. Good stuff on the riverfront.
Any other additions?
Team, we do have, on request of funding from the joint, we do have the, a couple of items here. Southern Youth Leadership is still on here that we haven't moved on yet. If we're going to make a move on that one. And then Pounds of Care is still on here. And then Westside Restoration Group, they're requesting, we hadn't got the documents. I think they're here today, but those are some that's on our joint list.
Is there anything left in the joint?
Yeah, we do have a very little. We've gone through it pretty quickly.
Eighty-one thousand.
Is there any interest individually among the commissioners on helping the Southern Youth Leadership Development?
I'll do two thousand dollars to help them on the trip. Florence, you will put that down for me.
I'm going to do five thousand for my designated for, for the Southern Youth Leadership. Can we throw five, another five in from the joint?
Well, they really, I talked with Ms. Crenshaw. If we could probably come up with ten, that would probably really help her cover that trip. We've done different amounts in the past, but ten would be what would help her get that trip done.
Well, we're three short. Put me down for two, Florence, for that from designated.
And I'll do one. That gets us to ten.
Okay, thank y'all. And the other one that we have the documentation on, attachments and all, is the Pounds of Care Incorporated. Commissioner Sankey helped them in twenty twenty, this year, actually, in January of twenty twenty-two. And then we did something for a nursing assistant training program in twenty eighteen.
Ms. Chairman, the project that Pounds of Care is actually entertaining is somewhat large based upon the dollar amount. And what they want to do, I think, is have the, the ARPA funds have us consider funding this initiative via the American Rescue Plan Act.
Yeah.
And I still need more clarification on it. Is anyone from Pounds of Care here today? Just curious, okay.
We'll hold that over and talk about it later then. And that is the only one other than the AUM baseball. I'm trying to find that note here. Oh, here. Does anybody see the note on AUM baseball that says attached? I might not have the attachment.
Oh, that one that I?
Yeah.
I just texted to find out how much they wanted and what's the name of the team.
Okay.
See if I can find it.
All right, Florence, that'll be all for now then.
All right. Next, we'll consider a budget change request number one for community corrections, budget change request number thirteen for engineering, a budget change request number five for personnel, budget change requests numbers eight and nine for the probate judge's office, budget change request number two for the recreation board, budget change request number three for the revenue commissioner's office. Consider a position fill request for appraisal for an assistant chief appraiser. Consider position fill request for the detention facility for corrections officer, trainee, and corporal. Consider a position fill request for the probate judge's office for an accounting supervisor. Consider travel training request for the detention facility. That's all our items.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we move forward, I have just a question, maybe just a matter of procedure on the Vaughn Road intersection project. I noticed in the past, well, there have been several instances where NPO money is being used for, for county projects, road projects, that we've had resolutions that was necessary to be signed by the various, the members of this, this body. So I'm just wondering, what is the difference between what we're doing at Vaughn Road and the previous projects that requires a resolution from the county commission?
Kevin, y'all, George, y'all familiar with that?
It's already, the resolution's already been signed. This is the, the project's already been, been bid out of contract and this is just signing off on the contract.
So we did do a resolution for this particular project?
Originally initiated and that's on the resolution was signed.
Okay. How long ago has that been?
Probably three to four years ago.
Yeah, it's been out there a while. We've been talking about this, just adding the turn lane, additional third lane, so it's been out there a while.
Thank you.
Good question, though. Okay, Florence.
George speak. Item number one, which is a waived rule item.
Okay, we are requesting award of the Water and Santer Sewer Construction Contract to low bidder DeBoggs Construction, amounts three hundred sixty-nine thousand four nannia. And under the purchase and sale agreement, the county commission agreed to pay two hundred fifty thousand dollars max. And the remainder would be up to, would be responsibility of Premier Teg.
No objection.
Any objection to waiving rules?
None. I'm just curious about any of the bidders. Normally, you put the other bidders on, on the agenda in terms of, you know.
This one, this has only had one bidder and we actually opened bids back in March. And the price came in at four hundred forty-seven thousand. And the contractor, Go Millen Kaywood and John Chamless, they've been working together to get the price down within, within budget. And they've got it negotiated down to three sixty-nine, but there was only one bidder and that was back in March.
All right, thank you.
Any objection to waiving rules today?
I've got no objection.
No objection.
Thank you, Florence.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from chief revenue clerk Allison Holland regarding item number two.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm before you today for the annual report for the revenue commissioner's office. The report of our annual insolvents, errors in assessments, litigations, lands bid in and abatements, which are our credits that we take for final settlement each year. Does anybody have any questions about it?
No, I don't.
We're just requesting your approval so we can settle with the statement.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next agenda.
Next, we'll hear from finance director Cheryl Thomas.
Good morning. I've got a couple of items on here. The first is a budget change. Because it's coming from fund balance, I bring that to the information and you put it on the next agenda. The medical and dental inmate costs are running about a million dollars. You know, trending to be a million dollars over budget. We increased the budget a good bit last year. And when I looked at the budget, I said, oh, it won't cover the contract. So I wanted to go ahead and bring this one to you.
What's, what's leading that increase?
Somebody else can probably better speak to that. One is, is we have a contract with Millennium that vets, I think it's a lot of the outside. Then, you know, we have an in-house health provider, but it's a lot of the out, over that contract pharmacy benefits and other. A lot of that's just, you know, going over. I think we have a lot of high-dollar inmates.
Somebody who knows what, because that's a huge under budget. I mean, we, we budgeted for that.
Yeah, we, we did do an estimate. I think the biggest thing is Millennium was budgeted at just the standard amount. And it's what's really trending the most over it, is that contract.
You want, Melissa Peak from risk management can probably speak to this. She's been working closely with the sheriff's office and the detention facility.
While she's coming down, I'll go ahead. The other item I have on here is, at our request, personnel looked at our assistant payroll and benefits assistant. That is the assistant to the manager payroll and benefits. We had had her asked that she review that job description. And they are recommending that it increase from an A four to a A six. And I'd like y'all to approve that. It's a position that processes county payroll. And we've had, you know, trouble. The position was paid the same as a customer service clerk or reception and their duties and responsibilities are just far more than that. So just asking for that approval.
Sure, is that position filled currently?
No.
So it's open position?
No, we had, we've had two employees in there, different ones, that it just didn't work out. I think, like I said, the position responsibilities are more than the pay was.
Is this a position that you're currently seeking someone? Is it an active search?
We did, we had a, like I said, after the last person vacated, we were really working to get this position upgraded. This kind of started right around the pandemic and so.
Is it currently filled?
No.
No.
So you'll, you'll be in the market?
Yeah, we'll, right.
Okay. One other thing before you move over, Cheryl, what about our budget? Where are we on that for next year's budget?
The which budget?
Next year's budget.
Oh, well, my third item was just to remind you that we're having budget hearings on, at the next, after the next meeting on the nineteenth.
Yeah, a little late.
Actually, it's right, that's when we normally have them.
Is it?
Yeah, last year it might have been on the eighteenth.
I thought it was June, I thought we did it in June.
Normally, we've done it after the second meeting in July.
I send everything out to the departments in May. They get them back to me just last week and, no. It's pretty much on schedule. Thanks.
So be next agenda on the second conversation.
Good morning, commissioners. I can speak a little bit to the issues that we're experiencing with the inmate healthcare at the detention facility. There, it's a number of things that have come up within the, the last year and a half. We've actually had some inmates with very acute conditions that we have had to treat. There was one who was doing dialysis four days a week, had to be transported out. And he's been with us for a year and a half. There's been another one where there was a late-stage cancer diagnosis and they've had to do some treatments with that individual. Just a few examples of what we've been experiencing. There, there, I have found that there, I feel like that there is an issue with the fee schedule with Millennium risk managers who does our repricing for the, the medical bills. It is based upon a percentage of the savings instead of a flat fee rate, which I personally don't like. And I am working to renegotiate that, that contract to a flat fee schedule just because of situations like this. You know, if we, we end up with a hundred thousand dollars worth of medical bills and they cut it down to ten, then we pay them fifteen percent of the savings. So it ends up being that we are paying them more to process the bill. And I just don't think that that's going to work for this type of program.
So part of it is actually increase stay. So it's probably some of it has to do with the backup?
Yes.
And the trials and keeping people up there longer?
Absolutely. There's, there's one person in particular that we're, is waiting to be sentenced and transferred to Department of Corrections. So yes, that, at last year, when the courts were not in session, that absolutely, that that's been one of the issues in trying to get the inmates moving out.
I've always thought that our local medical providers should be given more consideration when it comes to providing healthcare to our inmate population. Just because you have a certificate or some type of credentialing in terms of correctional medicine doesn't necessarily mean the quality of care is any better. You know, you have doctors, other healthcare providers here in the city of Montgomery. I think who could do this and perhaps do it in a very cost-effective manner. So I've always been the opinion that just because you call yourself a correctional medical provider doesn't necessarily mean that the quality of care is any better.
Well, actually, I, I will say the reverse is actually true. The, the new provider has done an outstanding job in raising the bar on the care of these individuals. And a lot of these bills that came in recently were from last year prior to QCHC, who was handling the inmate health. These bills came in later because they originally were sent to Medicare instead to us. And so there was a late processing in, in those particular dialysis bills. But I, I can tell you that there have been fewer people sent off-site. There have been even fewer work-comp incidents within the facility with our officers because these inmates are getting better care, better medication, but better oversight in their medical care. So, and I think that the sheriff can even speak to how well Navcare has been doing in the facility. As far as outside providers go, I will say that actually a lot of them are hesitant to do any treatment for inmates because apparently, from what I've been told, there have been other counties that did not make good on the bill. And so there are some providers out there that do not want to do treatments for inmates. And that's been an issue that we have also encountered because of past history, not with us, but with, 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 with other detention facilities.
I'm sure we could carry this conversation on, but in the interest of time, I'll leave it at that.
Well, yeah, I've done a lot, I've done a lot of research and a lot of work into this the last three months. So I, I'll be happy to give you, all of you a briefing on this issue.
Thank you, Melissa.
All right.
Next agenda, please.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from housing manager Randall Beasley with the Alabama Department of Human Resources, the Office of General Services. He's here to talk about the DHR building.
He was one of the guys that won the World Series in softball at AUM many, many years ago. And what did y'all travel to? You went Texas, didn't you?
South Carolina.
South Carolina.
And runner-up in Texas.
Yeah.
So, anyway. Good morning. My name's Randall Beasley. I'm with the Department of Human Resources. Our department handles all of our buildings statewide. DHR has a, a building, at least one, in all counties in the state of Alabama. For the last four or five years, we've worked with Ms. Coffin trying to get a plan on the DHR building. At this time, our commissioners decided to renovate the existing building. As you are aware, we have moved into three leased properties in East Montgomery and Gunnar industrial park. Today, I'm here to ask that the commission please consider the renovation of the existing building. And there's a number of things that would need to be done, but the first thing would be for the commission to appoint an architect and do a contract with an architect so drawings could be done for the renovation of the building. It's because the building is owned by the county or through a PBA, all decisions are based on what your desires are. It's, it's a county-owned building. I would remind you, though, that when you do the bond issue, DHR pays all the funds for that, all the costs on the bond issue, all the architect fees. Plus, we're responsible for a hundred percent of the repairs once the building's renovated. And so I can share with you on the last eight buildings we've done in the last five years, we've used the same architect, Go Millen Kaywood. But it's up to you to decide. But we'd love to move forward on the renovation of the building and partner with you in this endeavor. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions that I might at this time.
I, I got one. I mean, I, I just can't help but ask it. I hope you can, can, I hope it's not too long of an answer. You can just give it briefly, but what's changed? I mean, it seemed to me, as my memory might be failing, but it was, it was determined that it wouldn't be worth it, worth the money or expense to renovate that building or to try to fix it. The best that we could get from the engineers and everybody went out there to look was that the best thing to do was to tear it down, start all over again. And I'm puzzled as to what changed.
I, I can't address the study that the church is talking about, but I do know over the last year, the commissioner has gotten architects and engineers to look at the building and also with the state of the economy as well. Projected cost on renovation is between thirty and thirty-five million, whereas a new one was between forty and forty-five.
And it was twenty-five when we started this conversation. It was twenty-five for raising the current and building brand new.
And so that's dramatically impacted her decision on, you know, floating a bond issue of that magnitude and then also having somebody look at the building as well to know that it can be renovated. Does that answer your question? I apologize for not.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what changed. It's going to be more expensive to renovate it now than to build a brand-new building.
I just hope that renovations work on that building because it was so poorly constructed to begin with. That was what was said before.
Yeah.
And, and, and because of that, you know, so many things needed to be corrected, you know? And you go in there, you spend thirty-five, forty million on a building that should have been torn down. A few years from now, we'll be doing this again. But it's your money.
Yeah. Well, it's our, it's our money. It's, it's their money. It's all of our money. It's not his.
Well, the state, state's gonna, will come. Well, the state, state's gonna, won't come out of our budget, put it like that.
So how, how is the facility that you all moved into, I guess, the temporary facility? How's that working out in terms of client access and all those things that has to do with transportation and et cetera?
Please remember, I'm a housing guy, not a DHR child welfare guy, but I can't address a few of those because they were addressed when we looked for those locations. Firstly, all three are located within stone's throw of each other, two are straight across the street, one's in the back for admin only that doesn't have any client access at all. It is on the bus route, has a bus stop right where both of our buildings are, and thus far, I've not heard of any negative reports on access for the clients going there. Most of our clients do travel by private vehicle, but it's dead on the bus stop with the, with the stop, a couple hundred yards from where our office is. So I think it's going well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Florence, what's the next step on this?
Would be to approve the hiring of Goodwin Mills and Kaywood as an architect to move forward construction documents for the renovation of the building.
So that'd be on our next agenda?
If...
Any other discussion? Next agenda.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randall. You guys seen each other?
The, another item we have is an alcohol license application for another special event for Latino Festival on August thirteenth, 2022.
It'll be next agenda.
Those are all the items to be considered in the information session. We have, the chamber has requested to meet in an executive session. Do you want to do that?
Yeah, I, I might ask the commission if, if you would like, before we can move into the executive session. We do have some guests here. If we can do it within five minutes or so, would they, they give, of course, I think they signed up for the next meeting, right? If we give you five minutes now, three to five minutes now, y'all want to come do it now? Westside Restoration, keep y'all having to wait, come on.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for this time. Westside Restoration did come to you on June seventh, and of course, you asked for us to submit some documentation, and we did it electronically. However, it seems as if it did not get to you. So I came in with about fifteen young men because we were at City Hall, and so we came over this way, and I dropped off a hard copy. So when we checked again the website, it showed that it was still pending. So today, we set less go because we're really serious about what we do, and so we came again with another budget and just some pictures this time because we did make it to Disney World last week, and we are still trying to rest up from that trip. So I don't want to just prolong it. We've already talked about it. If you don't mind, Ms. Franklin, just pass it out real quick. And I do have Valtina, she was with you the last time, Patrice Peterson, who's also another director and one of our volunteers that's with us today. And that's, I just really want to ask that you please consider, and I know that, that it was shown to be pending...
Thank you.
From our last meetings. So that just kind of give you an idea again.
Okay.
And I heard you mention it in, in your informational section about WRC.
You had about twenty went to SeaWorld and the...
No, it was more than twenty. We were, it was such a large group, we kind of broke them up a little bit. We actually had about sixty-five to go to SeaWorld, and that did not include our chaperones and our program assistants, who are children that's in, going to the tenth grade. They go and assist us, and what we do, we try to give them some kind of stipend. It is not very much each week, but that assists us with our other children, making sure that they get where they need to be. No, it was more than that.
They presented a budget to us today.
And this time, I thought it was just really a little prudent, not only to show our activity budget, but also to show our just regular operating budget, so you could see that we're not trying to clock any dollars. We just really giving back to the program.
Where are you drawing the young people from?
They're all from all over the city.
All over.
All over the city. As a matter of fact, because of the limitation of space, we actually had to turn some down, which we really hate doing, but we have to try to stay COVID-safe. We've had as many as ninety students in this program prior to COVID.
All right, well, we will, if there's no questions, we will...
Okay.
Take this in discussion and let you know something.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank y'all for coming in. Florence, we're going to recess now to executive session. We'll be back at ten o'clock for the formal session.
I got that answer to that text. Florence, that's a thousand dollars from my designated to, to AUM. AUM Dixie Youth Baseball.
Ms. Austin? Is there a Ms. Austin?
Ms. Johnson. Ms. Johnson. Yeah, that you want to at least brief the commission on what it is that you all are doing when it comes to housing? Please, is that okay?
Yeah, we got time, I think so. Chevy, you're going to be about ten minutes, won't you? That saves us a little time at ten o'clock. Keep you from having to wait all the time, but keep you from having to wait.
Well, my name is Susan Austin Johnson. That's why I didn't respond. I didn't know if there was an Austin or if there was a Johnson, so, so I didn't know it was me you were talking about. But I represent Faith Community Outreach, and one of our signature programs is Faith House. And with Faith House, we provide temporary housing and transitional housing for veterans currently and for, since October twenty-third, when we open our doors. And we've successfully been able to place literally veterans who have been sleeping on the street, who had nowhere to go. Some have gone to school. One is in med tech program into transitional living. We've had a hundred percent of eligible, people that were eligible to work find jobs and transition. We've had ninety percent who were eligible for housing, transition into housing, and one of the reasons that wasn't a hundred percent because we had a couple who felt like they needed more time. One was in education program. And then we have a whole nether portion that we're about to open, which is why we petitioned you all to house women and children, as well as to house, house general homelessness. And we conducted a tour recently. Commissioner Sankey was there, and we showed all the space that we have to be able to accommodate those who are generally homeless, who are not necessarily veterans. And we go through a criteria program for the veterans. We work directly with the VA most of the time for referrals. Alithia House, some of our other partners, we do partner with Easter Seals and other existing organizations to be able to make sure they have a complete wraparound services so that they can be sustainable in their independent living after they leave Faith House. On average, the residents stay about sixty days, and if they need additional time, we will allow them more time, but we do put them on a program where they learn banking, anything like that, that most of us have learned from our parents or community so that they can be sustainable.
How many participants have, do you have in the program?
We have served through, on our annual report from October through December, we had eleven people, and now we have an additional eight right now, and, and we just took in two more, actually, within the last couple of days. So we're at about twenty total, but we can accommodate, if we open up the upstairs, another forty-eight. The goal is to keep them, to not be there a long time, but to be able to provide the transitional assistance they need.
Ms. Chairman, I did go by, and I'm, I'm actually impressed with, with the setup, particularly with the wraparound services. I think that Faith Housing would probably be, will be an access, access, access actually when we, if we're focused on getting people off the street, the unsheltered people, those who need mental health attention, those who need job training. I think they would certainly be a community partner when it comes to wraparound services. And so I, I really hope that we will support them financially. And what we really want to focus on, at least from my perspective, want to help those people, those organizations who don't come to us on a regular basis, those who've been out there, you know, struggling, trying to make things happen, serving the population that we care about. We really, really want to put them, I believe, as a priority when it comes to providing financial assistance. So with that being said, I want to, Florence, five thousand from my designated revenue to, to this particular organization, assuming they have the proper paperwork in place, and I believe they do.
Where are you located, the home?
Nineteen thirty-one Highland Avenue. We have a wing within Faith Church.
Okay.
And I will say this, I've actually spoken with a couple of times the state outreach coordinator for the Veterans Affairs Administration, and they said what they love about our program is that we're catching people that are falling through the cracks, who oftentimes, they're not considered in other data, other programs, and sometimes even the VA can't catch them. And because we're right there in the middle of the community, we're able to catch those individuals.
Any other questions?
And what's the name of the organization, please?
Faith Community Outreach, Inc., and this particular program is Faith House.
Would you be kind enough to give Commissioner Sankey a budget to him for your organization? We always ask for budgets.
Yes, definitely. I, actually, I believe I emailed it with the entire package of information she asked me.
You're ahead of us.
Yes, I, I think it was about ten or twelve things she wanted, and I got all those two, and budget was one of them. Yes, sir.
Are y'all a five oh one six three?
We are, sir.
Good. Get that, Florence. She said, she's got it.
She has it.
She's got it. Okay, good. All right, any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we move into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.